Hello, everybody. Thanks for waiting. Sorry for a bit delay. We have a lot of time to close session. 3.1 is called to order a closed session. We are going to leave the open session at 6:09 PM. By law and board policy, unless notified, these events will be recorded. But by law and board policy, any member of the public we addressed before on the item on agenda or any non agenda item, both the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you to kindly continue your speakers since this time and want to run a condition meeting. Speakers who are non agenda items may return prior to item 4.2. During the public regarding non agenda items, you will be recognized and called for voting at that time. You have three minutes to address at the end of the floor. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speakers will be returned by item 5.8. During the public regarding agenda items, if they recognize a call for voting, when your request agenda ends up. You will have three minutes to address at the end of the floor. 3.2 in favor of action taking the closed session. We're sorry we did not complete closed session. So items 2.5 and 2.6 will be continued closed session after the open session. With regard to OAHK number 202, 208, 0324. In closed session by UDN's vote. The board voted to approve compromise agreement and release with student in OAHK number 202, 208, 80324. The agreement includes special education services, assessments, and attorney fees in exchange for waiver and grants against this. OAHK number 202, 203, 0407. In closed session by UDN's vote. The board voted to approve compromise agreement and release with student in OAHK number 202, 203, 0407. The agreement includes special education services and attorney fees in exchange for waiver and grants against this. 3.8, ladies and gentlemen. You will welcome back.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board's approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Okay, there is. All those here?
Aye.
Disposed. The motion to approve the agenda has passed. 4.1's correspondence. Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics: enrollment enrichment programs, campus act for hours' use, universal meals, state class, special education, and diversity and community education. Thank you. 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non agenda items. Alright, 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non agenda items. We will now call members of the public requested to address the end of the floor. Items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public would like to press hearing of the board regarding non agenda items. Please spend as few minutes of this time. And here are the items. We have Gina Vargas, followed by Danielle Royball.
Good evening. I'm here to say thank you for the wonderful start we've had for our year. Having the six week assessment period. Let's create a new chance to learn who is inside the act. Who's where they are. I know how I'm gonna cap that for you. And provided with these ordinary school families. These are a really kind little group. They have time. They need about a seven or eight years. And yeah, they really enjoy being together. And feel like a little family. And this week when they started on their eleventh years. Traitors. They were so excited. They were so ready. And the gift of time, it was the end of the year. So they could start their year. I think they were getting nervous and exhausted. Even and hot studying was just amazing. So I wanted to say thank you. I know that this is something that we've talked about for the last several months. And I just want to express my appreciation that I thought this was a fine and magnificent decision. Thank you.
I know we're all qualified to. You all will have me there. I'll just jill out the shirts out of what you can imagine. And then you will. Pass. Down. I swear by my Christ, I'm sorry. But I haven't started speaking. I'm by disrespectful, absolutely. Hello, could you hear me? My name is Danielle Royball. I have a son that attends school in this district and a representative community that appears retaliation. For educational code 35145.5, I am besing this concern that our lives today be placed on the agenda for discussion at the next board meeting. First, I want to start off with some definitions. F.A.T. is free access to a public education. It's a federal law entitlement in education to all students of the United States who are identified as having a disability guaranteed by the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Individuals with Disabilities Act, also known as IDEA. California Code 56001 is a state law that provides students with disabilities the offered special assistance programs that promote maximum interaction with the general school population. Now let's talk about least restricted environment and what it means. Basically, it means that to the maximum extent possible, children with disabilities are educated with children who are not disabled. And special classes, separate schooling, or other removal of children with disabilities from the regular education environment occurs only when the nature and severity of the disability of the child is such that education in regular classes with the use of supplementary aids and services cannot be achieved satisfactorily. I'm very concerned because DMUSD is not properly following the law and is at the cost of taxpayers. Not to mention that it's depriving children of their appropriate federally approved services. When I permitted Dean Shink direct for special education, DMUSD speak at the last board meeting and educate the board on special education law, it was clear that DMUSD is not following in. The law is very clear about this. If you take a look at that document I cast out, it talks about how the law works. Also, I cast out an excerpt of what the teachers submitted for complaint to the board. Of two people on the administration, Jenny and Dean, who are responsible for our medical acts. Anyway, going back to least restricted environment. You're supposed to start a general education classroom and provide the aids and supports for the child. DMUSD does it the opposite way. You place a child in the most impacted classes and make the child earn their way into general education classes. This is not the law. As a remedy, I'm asking for a reorganization of the entire special education program and immediate removal of the attorneys that are advising DMUSD to break the law. Daniel Shinoff, who took out practice by the San Siro School Board, Fay of Heeman, Full Frost, Artiano Shinoff, and Lozano Smith. I'm also asking for an independent review of the special education program and those who have placed it in jeopardy to become accountable. I look forward to a speedy resolution. After all, there are two attorneys on this board. One is seeking reelection on November 8 ballot. And three people on the board are seeking reelection. I'm concerned that instead of looking into it when the issue arose, the board decided to extend this contract another four years with a 4% yearly salary increase.
Thank you.
Also by a chosen to remain as a candidate for the DMUSD school board. Thank you. Thank you, Jackie Tiffany, followed by Darian Paral.
Hi, thank you for giving me this time. I've probably been a kindergarten teacher in this district for many years. I started back in the day when we had extended day and kept opening small classes for kids. For only an hour, one day a week while the children went home or went to some sort of childcare facility. After lots of team meetings, lengthy discussions, and time well spent, our district's schedule was changed. We went to full day. Kindergarten is the only grade level that most kids come in with no information other than their name. We have to solely rely on spending time with them to get to know them and find out anything about them. Some have never been to school before and are starting from ground zero. No matter the situation, the first trimester of kindergarten can be a beast. Realizing that there is no previous teacher, yellow cards, or people who should go to, our district thought this through and graciously built in the kindergarten day for teachers to sit alone with their children and how to chat with them and get a feel of what they know and how their hangings go. Let me just be impatient for the past six weeks. I would spend about four and a half hours with my class each day. In those hours, other than the curriculum that I try to squeeze in, I experienced body accidents, complete meltdowns for various reasons from music isn't working right to I miss my mommy. And not to mention the continuous rolling, summer salty flipping, and perpetual loss of classroom tools. I spent time teaching kids how to log onto clever with unpredictable wifi, might add. It's an emotional time, it's a frantic time, and it's more hectic than most grades. The level of performance I would give to kids if they had to go two more hours starting from the first day is unimaginable. The best I would be able to offer will not be the type of program that Delmar kindergarten parents are pleased with. I foresee it consisting of more playtime and downtime, lots of recess breaks. And this is the best use of the time. Ideas of having credential teachers or students come in from classroom to classroom, these have surfaced, but in my opinion, that would increase the amount of unstructured learning, lack of appropriate training, and frankly, not much will be accomplished. Five year olds are not equipped to work independently at this time, regardless of previous schooling. If others are doing a fun activity and one student is being asked to identify letters and sounds, you are going to experience that fear of missing out. And I would not give a true sense of what that student is all about. I would also be opposed to having someone else assess my children and report the findings back to me. I think that defeats the purpose of learning about those that I'm responsible for educating. I realize this topic has been brought up before. Thankfully, the good decision wasn't made without thoroughly leading through talking with experienced kindergarten educators and weighing pros and cons. The best decisions made for our students in Delmar have been those that have remained as a team. As this continues to become a topic for discussion, please ask yourself, are there developmental benefits of extending the school day from day one? Or will it create more of a problem for kids? Please keep our students in mind. These babies have only been on this planet for five years. That's a void doing too much too soon. Thank you.
I think that's right. Darcy Mera Montes. Darcy Mera Montes, well, I don't think that.
My name is Darcy Mera Montes. My family has resided in this district for almost 20 years. I come to you today as a concerned resident and parent in this district. We were involved in a lawsuit with the Delmar Union School District and your special education department in 2018. But again, I come to you today as a concerned resident and parent. I'm aware of a recent disclosure of documents pertaining to the district's special education department and their alleged malfeasance. I believe this board has a financial and ethical obligation to investigate those claims made by their own teachers and staff. Any investigation into your own special education department and their alleged misdeeds cannot be conducted by anybody at the Delmar Union School District in the administration. And that includes people on this board and revenue today. They are clearly conflicted and cannot conduct an arms length relationship for investigation. That is like the fox guarding their hen house. And that includes people I know personally that Mr. Sammy, who I like and respect. This is about fair and equal representation. Under educational code 35145.5, I request this board from the matter on their agenda for the next meeting in October, this. That a third party independent investigator look into claims made by your own staff and teachers within your special education department and the alleged misdeeds by administrators in the special education department they work for. This is not about this board and it's not about me. This is about educating our most vulnerable children and doing right by them. This board needs to do the right thing and understand what the public is watching.
Thank you, Stephen Brenner.
Bren, that's right.
Bren. Yeah, Bren, followed by Valerie Shortson.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Brenner. And I'm a teacher over at Delmar. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And I just want to reiterate the message that we're thankful for the first six weeks in school and being successful, eleven and a half days. And the importance of maintaining that. The importance of maintaining the initial six weeks of kindergarten at minimum days. It's crucial to our district's vision. The unrelenting pursuit of extraordinary school experience. At this time of day, we need equal one on one interactions. Bill's report begins to allow us to understand our students' needs. Chosen districts unique and that relationships between students and teachers are recognizing the foundation of a child's learning career. The belief statement of DMUSD also states that we see opportunities for revolutionizing traditional school system. Starting full day from the first day of kindergarten is traditional. And the proposed plan of hiring a sophisticated staff or substitutes for the first six weeks isn't viable or sustainable. It's not a solution that allows student needs to be held within the classroom and building community with a strong relationship with their teacher. If we lose personalized meetings with our youngest learners and don't have the opportunity to assess the baseline to meet the needs of an individual student, then we are not revolutionizing a traditional school system. Instead, we are settling to be traditional in a pattern. We want our students to be mis-takers and not settled. So we need to continue to be an example of what's best for our learners in our district. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Valerie Shortson. And I have the absolute privilege of being in this district for over seven years. I have a daughter applying to some of the top colleges in the country with ease and wealth due to this district. And I'm a part of the community today that we really don't come out enough because we're happy. We are very happy. Hard to hear it, I get it. But I also come with you as a mother who has had children within the special education department. And the irony of it is the two speakers in our kindergarten area identified my children within the first three weeks. And I just could not be more grateful because if you know and see them, they are absolutely great. So again, I am going to be on the other side and tell you that I think you all, including our administrators, our teachers, our staff, and our community are doing an absolutely amazing job. And it is not easy. What we all do here, and I am not here to say it is, but the majority of the people that I'm around and I get to see, which I do have the luxury of being on campus a lot, are very, very content, very happy, and quite frankly honored to be in this district. So I say thank you to every single one of you. Thank you to our staff, our administration, and our community. Because we are in it together and we do it together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I say a final comment here at 5.1? The board recognition, DMUSD employees. Please join me in recognizing these outstanding employees of the month of September. From Ashley Falls School, Vicki Anderson, kindergarten Spanish immersion teacher. I'm looking to see you in person. Delmar School, Allison Wilkins, school counselor. Christine Williams, sixth grade teacher. John Mar Hills Academy, Kate Wademan, kindergarten teacher. The Tiers School, Sandy Jackson, kindergarten teacher. The Pacific Sky School, Ashley Wibbels, state class innovation technologist, teacher. Page Canyon School, Gina Abamonte, fifth grade teacher. Corridge, Eric Lima, sixth grade teacher. Cory Hills School, Shannon McAfee, fourth, fifth grade conflict teacher. The Boys' Development Center, Emily Weiss, associate teacher. Office, Michelle Bothy, administrative assistant in business services. Some of us know all of these people very well. And we can attest to the fact that they are exceptional and very, very deserving of being recognized as employees of the month for the month of September. So congratulations to all of them. And when we see them personally, if you're here, when we see the rest of them personally, we will tell you congratulations. We got a big shout out at the board. Congratulations. 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 5.2 is the board report for the Delmar Californian Teachers Association. Alright, Kevin Pedia.
President Halpern, the board, president of the board. I'm being a bit... I feel like I'm perfect way from each one.
I know, I'm gonna push back.
I think that's okay. I can work it forward. Alright, I do have a presentation for you tonight. So I'll give a quick update on a quick and brief presentation. Okay, I'll pay it on over to the PTA and move on. So we can get to the rest of the meeting. We have been busy start of the year. We have a whole new executive board working with me. So we've been here a bit. Actually, my vice president, Jason, is here tonight with me. And we have a... I'm gonna say thank you, Jason. Also, we have mostly new site reps. So we've been meeting, trying to get the year going, just training. And we're really kind of running pretty here, very busy. So we've had our first PRD, professional relations, where there's a chance for the site representatives and executive board to meet with Ryan and Polly and be able to discuss a few things. We're able to talk about the start of the year, ups and downs, things that we think we can maybe move on and things that are going great. And just an overall productive conversation. Also, this year, we are getting ready for bargaining again. And we don't need a contract this year. So we will be serving our members coming up soon. See our articles they're interested in us discussing. And hopefully sunshine goes the next one, a few more meetings. So we can start hopefully bargaining generally. Other than that, just gotta say it's been a good start of the year. And I hope you all are doing well. And we'll see you in the next one. Thanks.
Thank you. And next we will have the board report from the Delmar School Education Corporation president, Loretta. Welcome.
President Halpern, members of the board, super excited to work. I'm very pleased to talk to you today about our call campaign and give you an update. We're just wrapping it up. Like I wrapped it up and we're telling the numbers. And as you can see, we've done fantastic. 400,000 out of our 1.4 million goal. We raised so far. So that's almost 30% of our goal. We wanted to give you, translate that a little bit. So we put there what that might mean for our goals. We're trying to be in terms of teachers, C+ teachers. So we're trying to raise money for 11. That's our share. But we're trying to contribute 11 C+ teachers. We're already almost at three C+ teachers. So, you know, here we are early in the year. And our call campaign is trying to take the burden off of trying to haul our fundraising on our spring fundraiser. And so I think, you know, having raised 30% of our council rate is a really great start to the year. So I'm glad. I mean, I really feel that we're working great with the PTA's presidents and principals at every school, district that really helped bridge that relationship. Making it stronger and stronger every year. And I think parents are getting the message that that the state is providing enough funding to these people. Parents do have to contribute. And they have to contribute to the PTA as well. Because of what the PTA does. I think they're finding, we're getting better and better at communicating that message. That we have to contribute to both DMSD, PTA, and the root parents. You know, what they're asking for. There's a lot that parents say they're doing. They think they're coming to, talking to a public school education. What do we have to date for anything? But it's, but they understand. I think they're getting the message of this is part of the money I'm raising. I mean, the average gift amount is $75,000. You know, that's incredible. And we're reaching out to the community to get support to help support our fundraisers. So just wanted to show you some of the corporations that have been helping us. We are going to be starting, just to talk about this a little bit, trying to, as part of my, one of the things I'm reading in as a new placement to DMSD, is that we're going to be trying to look for a major gift from some of local corporations. So that's going to be useful. These sponsors, this is great, these sponsors are helping out with incentives for our parent giving. But we do want to really focus on getting some larger gifts from some of the big companies that are in our area that our parents work for. But if you go back to this, then you'll see, we already have $19,000, nearly $19,000 that we're donating to local employers of our parents. So that's great. And we're looking for like major gifts. So hopefully we'll be able to see that change if this year next year is successful. But so far, all's great. And no longer the wonderful C+ teachers that we have.
Thank you. I'm taking a start. We're at 5.4, record, board reports. Start with it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's been a busy month for me. I had the opportunity to attend the parents' prayer series given by Dr. Seines. And it was amazing. And he's giving another one tomorrow evening on due. It was so great to hear him. I took a lot from him. And I'm sure tomorrow that will be just as inspirational and educational. I also attended a site visit. It was kind of like a VIP site visit. It was after my working hours, after the school day had ended. But after our parents were there. And this was Dr. McCord and Principal Learner. And it was great to see the new playground equipment that they have installed. And it looks like dream of playground equipment that I'm hoping all of our sites can have soon. And I attended the Pacific Sky Women's Ceremony. Again, that school is amazing, absolutely beautiful. Yeah. That's happening, thanks.
That thing I'm doing is anything like a center staff. It's wonderful. I was at the center staff. I was a little tiny. How we might have gotten a couple of it. It really loud. But it was, it was a fantastic school. They might have sent over there. You should all take a look at it. And it is gorgeous. It is everything that we have tried as a board or tried to put into our into our facilities faster plan. With the outdoor spaces, the openness of this, you know, so that any of the kids can can just oscillate on what they're actually working on. Take together in small groups. You know, the teacher can still maintain order in the classroom. You can see quality in all directions to get where the kids are. So it puts everything in perspective of what we've been trying to do. And I think it's important to school. I can't wait to see all the hype that's done. But this is just fantastic. It exceeded my expectations. And I actually saw it finally done. Anyway, that's, that was my report.
Well, I am the chairperson for the North City West Facilities Mining Center Board, which oversaw the Belarus, when Belarus was being used to build the schools that most of you are continuing or going to. And at this point, the North City West is just overseeing the payback of the taxes that were raised for the Belarus schools. But sometime back, there was a discovery that there were some overpayments made for the construction. And as a result of that, our district is getting back significant amounts of money. We've already gotten some back. And at this last meeting, I was told the next meeting we have, we're going to that we have for North City West, we're receiving another payment, I think. Historically, those payments have been in the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it's always nice to get money back. And we have nice schools to root to, so that's, that's good. I also listened to the appellate court argument that our attorney had with regard to the litigation of Sabal Field. And in that argument, from my perspective, fairly clear where the judges were going to go just based on questions that they were being asked, since you've seen a lot of appellate court argument, you've never seen what they kind of telegraphed where they're headed by the questions that they're asking. And some of the questions that were being asked, that we didn't believe that they were going to find in the way that they ultimately did, which means that the appellate court made their decision. I'll leave it with someone else to talk about what exactly that decision says. But let's just say it's good news for the district. And I'm hopeful that that decision, although it was by what's called a published opinion, it's not a published opinion, which means you can't cite to it, you know, leave it behind. But it is instructive, and we have a hearing coming up in that case later this weekend. And I'm hopeful that that judge uses the analysis of the appellate court in form of their opinion and that second litigation is based on the permit that was issued by the city. I can't wait till we're done with that and I'll transition into what Scott was saying about Deuceville, because I gotta believe that if anybody over by Delmar Heights had the opportunity to see Pacific Sky School and see what is involved in a state-of-the-art educational facility, they would walk that in the backyard. You know, I saw the school and I wanted to apply to go there. And some of the schools my kids applied to in college are as nice as that school. With the, with just the little things, the thought out areas, everything was thought about. It truly is the state of the state of the art as an educational facility. And I gotta believe, if I'm looking for a positive kernel of the delay in construction of Delmar Heights, I gotta believe that what was determined through the course of this delay may be implemented in the construction of Delmar Heights. So maybe I'm struggling because it's never good to be wrong, but if we can implement something new as a result of this, then that's a kernel of positivity. That's my report.
Hello, everyone. And a few things I went to this past Monday. First, I was at the DMSDF meeting, as a board representative, and it's doing a fantastic job taking over the meeting. I always want to say that like, that group, the volunteers at the DMSDF, they really don't get attention for all the things that they do. They're just volunteers out there trying to hustle their money, basically, to help pay for our teachers, and it's just a lot of work. They do so much and they really don't get the respect that they do for the time that they invest into it, and it's, it's really a great thing that they're doing for us. It's much appreciated. So, so thank you again, welcome. Thank you for, for the work that you're doing. I also went to the San Diego County Governors' Awards Association meeting, I go to the, as a, as a delegate of the CSBA. And the speaker this month was the Superintendent for the county certification, I'll be Paul Goffle. And basically, he was offering to all the school districts out there that the government's training with something that they would sponsor because they didn't have it, they had to deal with. Some of these folks have rode a boat, apparently they're really good. I talked to Polly about it a little bit, so, so she's gonna keep an eye on it for us, and if you are interested, you'll be free charged and I'll go with it's more government training, and it's something separate from CSBA. It would be something that, just kind of in addition to, if anything, it would be useful to us. And let's see, oh, and also CSBA conference for next year will be at San Francisco. So I'd go there, and then the following year will be in Antler. So, yeah, beyond San Diego. And last thing is Pacific Sky, it's awesome. Yo, oh my God. I can't say any more than the, the, yeah, I can't say any more than the three that I've said before, but, you know, the bar is set so high. It is just, it's hot in here. And, you know, anybody sees that place, if you don't want something like that, you know, it's, it's, it's incredible. So, I mean, I, I think I was one of the last ones out because my kid wouldn't leave. Like my three-year-old was running around. So it was, it was amazing. So kids love it, teachers love it, apparently. Thank you very much. And also thank the district for giving that all that. Yeah, you know, and I've said this at, at, at there, but I mean, I, just, community is so appreciative. I have not heard like a negative thing. Like I, I live in the community, so I mean, I'm in there and every single person comes up to me, it's like, this is, I just think ever. And so I'm positive that I get this great feeling just walking around. It's something we feel nice, warm and cozy too. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, you know, we talked about why is this feeling such a great space over there? You know, just to see all the little kids there, right? And the intuitive way that they're interacting with the furnishings, you know, you don't have to tell the kid, okay, you sit on this chair in this manner, and like, but they know, they know how to use the feedbacks of the, the, where to sit, how to, how to engage with the space. And so all of that is, and then obviously the playground, the classroom, like the learning spaces. That's from years and years, I talked about, the groundbreaking of the district, working very hard and very thoughtfully and very thoroughly on, you know, one of the right learning spaces for kids. Obviously, always an ongoing conversation, but it's, it's really manifested in that, in those, in those spaces. And you can see how now those classrooms are set up, very nicely. We know how right now to provide the best environment where kids can be ready to learn and learn and engage. So that was really exciting to see. And the playground equipment, I think I definitely have to go by there, just pride on myself, because it really does sound super fun. Definitely bring it at least my funeral. So it's great, and I completely thank the district for all of our work to put up. And I was really excited to get the bills for a ruling as well, so we'll talk about that later. But we're looking forward to seeing Delmar Heights built and a similar learning environment and making space, put back in place there. So I will add, on the topic of Delmar Heights, that I went to Harvest Fest and it was very joyful. There were little, there was a petting zoo and bubbles and, you know, taco trucks and, you know, every different kind of joyful childhood type of thing. And it's, it's nice tapping across all of the schools now, more and more, especially this year. It feels like the first rolling year and see all those great community building events coming back and enjoy the little joys of childhood and parenting and raising families is all on its way. So it's great. I'm excited for the rest of this year to continue to happen. Those are my four comments.
We're at five point five.
Yes, so regarding the superintendent's report, we have had such great events throughout the, the first several weeks of school, at every school, whether they are in-school events with assemblies starting or buddies starting at schools, or family events, somebody mentioned Dr. Seines, which was a district-wide family event. We've had everything that have brought this connectedness to our district that is so important. And then having that moment with the Pacific Highlands Ranch community last week and others from throughout the district was really fun to bring a lot of people together for some very good reasons. So it was just wonderful. I really appreciate the time that I have every month to spend with our DMSDF leadership, our PTA presidents, and, you know, professional relations. There are so many different groups that I have a chance to meet with to see how's it really going on the ground in the schools and our classrooms, and to get that feedback is so important. And, you know, we act on that because we want to do what's right and best for all of our kids, all of our teachers, want this to be the very, very best place to go to school and the very, very best place to work. So we are, it's just really fun and exciting to see the year off to such a great start. I also had a chance to visit or to attend the San Diego County Office of Education. They're coordinating because they recognize the five teachers of the year. We have one of the five teachers of the year, so not only, obviously, we have our own teacher of the year at every one of our schools, and we have a district teacher of the year. Stephanie Cluckston is one of the five county teachers of the year, and I will tell you, Stephanie, I know. And she is so eloquent, when she's at the point when she speaks on behalf of everyone and she talks about not only, you know, what she's doing in her classroom, but what the other 280 teachers in our district are doing. And she can speak just like some of the folks at Pacific Highlands Ranch spoke last Friday about really what makes our district community special. And she represents our district so beautifully well. The R Cox Channel Four and One Thousand Four is going to have the Salute to Teachers on Sunday Afternoon Second at nine PM, so mark your calendars, and she, and they do repeat it. And Stephanie will be on, she'll be a big part of that, of that television show. So it was very exciting to be there, not only at that board meeting, but to see her introduced and recognized at the actual Cox Salute to Teachers. It was wonderful. Pacific Sky was great. I will add on to, to, you know, when we keep talking about the, the facility and the environment, Doug, you brought up North City West, and the fact that we're giving money back for facilities. We put that right back into what we know is a tool for children. And to our facilities, everything in our environments is a way that our kids and our teachers access teaching and learning. And that's what you can see now when you walk through our schools and our classrooms. That truly has become part of how they operate. You talked about, you know, how we talk, how we do certain things, because they use it as a tool. And it's really beautiful to see the stage that we're at in that professional learning with all of us and the expertise of our teachers, so many of them are here this evening, in actually using it as a tool with our children. It puts this district and them in a very different place than other districts who are talking about building schools and are building schools, so it's really exciting to see. I will say, you know, over the last several months, I've spent a lot of time highlighting the wonderful things that we've got going on in our schools and in our district, and they do. Dr. Alex Seines, when he was spent time with us last week, he emphasized some of the things that we know are so important, the connectedness that we have with one another and the importance of the positive human-to-human interaction and our own well-being and how we take care of ourselves, our children, and what we do with emotions. And I think it resonated with all of us, as parents, our teachers, and I think that's such important work that's helping to guide our conversations also. And I'm looking forward to these next few months, and I'm talking a little bit about strategic planning, but when we are, look, all of the conversations we'll have together to learn, okay, where are we now? And what's our next step? And what's our next move? And how do we involve people? And how do we have these productive conversations, whether lots of people are at the table and in the, or even the conversation? I think we have such a unique way to bring our whole community together again in the next few, in the next few months. I'm really looking forward to that. And we have one of our PTA presidents here tonight, Mindy. Mindy Lewis is the PTA president from Torrey Hills School, so I get to introduce the PTA president tonight, who's going to present on behalf of all of the presidents on kicking off the school year. Good evening, Mindy.
Thank you. Good evening, President Alber, members of the board. Very excited to be here. We have been in school for six and a half short weeks and a lot has happened in terms of night school during that time. So I'm gonna highlight some of the fun that has gone on for students, parents, staff, and the entire team. Just to remind you all, the mission of the California PTA is the positivity to capitalize with all children and families and our PTA's in the work entirely to do this. So I'm gonna show you some of the ways. One of them is welcoming students. We've wanted every student to feel welcome on campus from day one, and this has taken many different forms. PTA's, some of them have coordinated playdates over the summer for incoming here in our gardeners so that they get to have some familiar faces for the first day. Every PTA was on campus during the new student orientations and tours before school started, to lend their support. They worked very hard to make sure the first day was a day that was celebrated. You can see the pictures here, Carmel Bellar's PTA was there, they decorated the campus. A few others in school had PTA members dress up as the mascot and take pictures of the kids and welcome them in. And programs have already started at all the campuses through the PTAs, whether it be sponsoring lunch clubs, the reflection programs through the national PTA. And even during another example, Bellar Hills had a competition for an individual design. Each student got to sit in one for sixth grade and design a special sweatshirt for the sixth graders, and that was their winning design. We've also been working with the parents. A lot of the schools had welcome back breakfast the first day, which for many parents was their first time getting to have the true on-campus, first-day-of-school experience. I know at Torrey Hills, you can completely read out of the booth. We were not expecting the turnout that we were gonna have. There was not any coffee, any food left at the end. We had volunteer fairs. A lot of schools have been trying to have parents socials. This is a picture, Delmar Heights has had grade-level socials, and it has hosted, parents have hosted and invited other grade-level parents to come. And the PTAs have had their meetings, those may be their executive board meetings or general association meetings, and here's a picture of Pacific Sky School that got to have their first-ever appointed their PTA president, who is here, both executive board meetings and association meetings of the year. And we've been trying to ask to involve the staff anywhere we can. The PTAs help to provide staff lunches before school started so that the staff could be together and enjoy some time before the grades begin for the year. Ashley Fall showed us, you see her in the corner, with the positive notes for all the staff so that they can really feel loved before school year started. And we've been having amazing staff participation in our PTA events. That bottom corner picture is from Carmel Bellar's ice cream social. Their teachers came and served the ice cream, so I think those are hands full of good training and chocolate syrup. And the other picture is actually Stephanie Cluckston greeting at a restaurant night for Torrey Hills. And somebody took pictures as well, that's helpful. Everybody there. And we've been engaging families, we've had ice cream social, family picnic, restaurant night, carnivals, the St. Morich has their Italian Cappuccino, and Erica, you were talking about the Delmar Heights petting zoo. There's a picture of that in the corner. So all the schools have just been working to get everybody together and enjoy the tents. As we've only six and a half weeks in and looking ahead, we've planned so many, many, many different things across all nine campuses, and we are just looking forward to it.
Thank you. And now we move to a less inspirational. Okay, so anyway. Five point six is open public hearing to review the sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023, 2022, 2023 school year as required by Education Code Section Six Zero One One Nine. This public hearing is conducted with the purpose of hearing from the public prior to reconsideration as possible adoption of Resolution Number 202224 by the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Indian School District regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for 2022, 2023 school year. Written notice was given in accordance with the Education Code Six Zero One One Nine, another applicable law that called for the following public hearing to help before the Board of Trustees of the Delmar Indian School District with sufficiency of instructional materials for 2022, 2023 school year. The hearing is opened at six fifty-six PM. Is there any public input concerning the resolution? There is none? So then we are at five point seven, Board of Trustees Resolution 202224 regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2022, 2023 school year as required by Education Code Section Six Zero One One Nine. Resolution 202224 is presented this evening for the board's approval. Approval of this resolution allows the district to secure textbook funding from the state. Resolution 202224 incorporates additional language specified in the bill in 2024 which specifically identifies for bill and framework tax areas, that areas are required for districts to confirm sufficiency of materials in these subject areas. Resolution Number 202224 attached to the agenda online, may I review? So the, the, we have the motion, the motion to adopt, we can discuss, and then we'll ask for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 202224 regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for 2022, 2023 school year as required by Education Code Section Six Zero One One Nine. Are there any questions? In that case, is there a motion to approve Resolution 202224? Is there a second?
All seven.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, toast. Great, the resolution has passed, the hearing is closed at six fifty-eight PM. Okay, five point nine is board approval minutes for the August twenty-fourth, 2022 meeting. Uh, sorry, five point eight is very the public regarding agenda items. So for anyone who would like to address the board on a particular agenda item, the speakers are willing to determine at this time, that we recognize the quality of podium when your request to agenda item comes up, and then you'll have the privilege to address the board. Five point nine is board approval minutes for the August twenty-fourth, 2022 meeting. 5.7 is board approval minutes for the August 24th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for August 24th, 2022 meeting? Alligator?
Aye.
Do you have a question?
I have to stay.
Okay. About sentience. Okay, so we have board approving and then a host? Yeah, board approving and then one sentience. Let me check that. Okay. Sorry. Okay, now we are on consent agenda. Okay, the consent agenda is on 6.1 through 6.21. Are there any questions in the board regarding as the consent agenda?
I have a question. I think this is for Ryan on 6.19. It's the San Diego Teaching Program. So why don't you explain a little bit, talk a little bit?
Yes, San Diego, they offer a class for their students who are considering career education. And so what this agreement does is it allows their students to come and work with some of our, Delmar students, students, some of the experience in offering work with our students. Our teachers provide feedback to their program as well.
I mean, it sounds great to me. I was, I was curious how it's, how does it impact our, our staff? Is it like something that they assign for, or is it, how does it work with our teachers?
Yes, it's voluntary for our, it's voluntary for our teachers to decide. And practice when it's happening, often it will be some of our former students who will be the ones who then offer one voluntary, maybe the previous teachers volunteer as well, but it is voluntary for our, it's voluntary for our teachers.
Got it. Okay, yes, I noticed on the next one, I was like, I feel like USD one of that, but it was, I think there was, so obviously like having trained, or people that are possibly trained, I can see the benefits for our community and to our students. I'm kind of curious actually how, what the benefit, like having, of course, our students have learned about getting experience in education before us. You know, it's a voluntary program, I think it's more, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's wonderful for students to be able to make a motion to the education, to the students. Yes, so anyway, I could, that's all I have.
I have a question. First, I want to say, I'm happy everybody's here, but I'm especially happy because I love the whole of the tree here. It, it does my heart a good, and what a good dog, I gotta say. Which brings me to 6.14, again, and the fact that we're, we're retiring more policy for 2025, which is refusal to harm or destroy animals. First of all, why are we retiring that policy? Is there a good policy that's making it really bad?
We are retiring this because it is recommended by the California State Board Association because it is an outfit.
Oh, it's been codified?
Yes.
I like that even better. Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Aye. Okay.
All seven.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are at 8.1, board report strategic planning process. 7.1 is supportive of special education, specially designed. That's it, that means shift, director of special education is Steve supports, and Lori Carpenter, special program teacher, and Amy Sizer, Lori Black. Okay, we have been called for members of the board, Dr. Silver. We, I, we thrilled to be here today because Amy Sizer, one of our outstanding and learning lab teachers that currently works at Delmar Heights School. We are here tonight to talk to you guys about, talk to you about how specially-designed instruction is there to support our students that require that one service. Okay. Before this Sizer, this Carpenter highlights some of our dynamic programming, I wanted to explain the specially-designed instruction because specially-designed instruction is instruction that's tailored to the needs of our diverse, not only ID peoples and for accommodations and opportunities. Especially-designed instruction is different from the instruction that our students are receiving within the general education setting. It's different because it focuses specifically on ID peoples, and is also provided under the direct supervision of a special education teacher. Specially-designed instruction is provided within the least restricted environment according to which students may utilize ID. The least restricted environment refers to a setting where a child with a disability can receive appropriate education to meet their educational needs alongside non-disabled peers with a maximum extent of appropriate, maximum extent of appropriate. It's really important that everybody understands that the least restricted environment is for one students may not be the least restricted environment for others too. At Delmar, we strongly believe that learning is, when a student is learning in an appropriate environment, they can drive educationally. We make sure that our students are able to drive educationally by making sure that our staff are highly trained to not really provide the learning that our students require in that setting, but while they're also highly trained in order to determine each child's least restricted environment. Our staff is trained to do this through data, and they take this task very seriously. All decisions that our staff gave are always grounded in data. That data is then used to look at which program a student might make, be able to access, sorry, which program that student requires in order to access their learning, and making sure that that learning is meaningful and purposeful. Our students then are accessing learning through that continuum of services. The last time that I was here, I was giving a speech specifically about the services that our students have, are able to access. Now Amy and, Amy and Lori are going to highlight some of that specially-designed instruction within the environment setting.
Thank you, Amy. As Amy previously introduced, I'm Amy Sizer, and currently the education specialist supporting her learning lab program at Super Morridge. And this is our facility dog Sheldon, and these are he and I companions from Intercity. And we are both really excited to be able to share with you all about the amazing things we do in special education, and specifically with the learning lab program. This program is recommended for students who qualify for special education and require specially-designed instructions to progress within the general education classroom. The learning lab provides support to students who access core content instruction via the use of designated supports and accommodation. This is provided through a variety of service delivery models, push-in support, push-in support for, through the instructional model of co-teaching to support inclusion and pull-out supports. If a student is requiring support from the learning lab in a push-in model, our focus is to provide access to the assignments as well as instruction within the general education classroom. This could look like adult support provided in an approaching level activity and wonders that is connected to what they are doing in the classroom, but is scaffolded to the level. They could also chunk an assignment provided by the general education teacher to make it more manageable for students. Adult support can also ensure students are on task by providing positive reinforcement or taking teacher directions and breaking them down into smaller, more clear and concise steps. Providing specialized academic instruction through a co-teaching model requires intensive collaboration and co-planning of lessons prior to implementation. Co-teaching allows for more flexibility of delivering support through a variety of subjects, such as social studies, which can be very reading and writing heavy. Through the preparation and planning of lessons, the general education teacher and I collaborate on which reports to provide to specific students, both those with ID peoples and without. For example, some students can need access to sentence frames or wordings, while others may benefit from adding visuals to support connections or front loading of vocabulary prior to reading. The goal is to ensure that all students have an access point and their learning is purposeful Some students require access to pull-up supports for portion of their school day and or week. This is provided in a small group environment within the learning lab, where we focus on their IDP goals and developing foundational skills. For example, a student with a learning disability may require an explicit and research-based program designed to support their reading development. As you can see in the photos, our facility dog Sheldon is supporting this type of instruction, teaching a student to sound Q U makes. In order to ensure that a student can generalize from a small group environment back into the general education classroom, cultures of thinking is embedded within my teaching practice, whether I'm in the learning lab or in the general education classroom. When we recommend the learning lab program, it is determined by what the students need and really what they are telling us through data and assessment. We are very intentional in determining what student services should look like, their location, whether in the classroom or in the learning lab, and the amount of time they require to ensure progress on their IDP goals and access to the curriculum. The goal is to provide every student with what they require to have a successful, purposeful, and meaningful education. I'm now going to pass it off and present to you one of my colleagues, who's going to be describing another one of our incredible programs.
Good evening. I'm Lori Carpenter, and I have been the fourth through sixth grade alternative learning curriculum teacher for 12 years at Delmar Heights. And so pleased to be able to share this program with you, and also the amazing learning that happens within it. This special, oh, I'm sorry, she didn't let me know. I have to get the keyboard. This specialized program is designed for students with disability school access for core content curriculum through alternative curriculum. The learning characteristics of the students in the ALC program represent a really broad range, but the necessity for our program is always based on the student's cognitive needs. Enrollment in my program is determined by the student's IDP team, and it's based on data and assessment. Our ALC program is the bridge between the level core content standards and the relevant curriculum content. In 2014, Delmar adopted the unique systems as our alternative curriculum. That's the first one. I think the curriculum consists of four components per month. The first one is our, is really our content curriculum, the unique learning system, and this, this provides our students with a comprehensive, standards-aligned curriculum for reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. And all the lessons are modified to make sure it meets the students' needs at their learning level and gives them a way to participate and to learn. News to you, which is my favorite, is the system that connects my students to the outside world. It's a, it offers a differentiated, age-relevant newspaper, weekly newspaper, with activities connected to it, as well as a daily, well, several daily news articles that come out. And this gives the kids, the students opportunities to have socially relevant conversations within the program. They also complete activities related to it that promote their academic skills. Symbol Sticks is the program that provides me with over 90,000 pictures related to the words that are used within the curriculum and within our daily lives, including our high-frequency words. And I'm able to produce, you know, pitch boards and reading as picture support, or reading text as picture support, using that program. And then L3 Skills is a fun, accessible, and age-appropriate games platform, academic and life skills games platform, and is, is really good for our students because it's a safe, mom-friendly environment, so we know that there's no input from the outside other than the program. So with, and with the exception of the L3 Skills, all three of the other programs, I can access it through technology devices, like through touchscreen, as well as the student devices, and through paper, so I know wide variation of how I'm able to present the curriculum throughout the month. And then I also want to point out that the unique systems gives us an incredible amount of professional development that's accessible through our online access, but also they have a huge, palatable knowledge base that we're able to access on this block. We have a question about part of the program. So I just want to highlight that when I say that it is the connection between our California State Standards and our Content Connectors, every single lesson that I receive each month, I receive a packet of relationship and opinion each month, and every single lesson within that packet has, is available to me to connect the California standards to the California Core Content Connectors. So all of my students have a way to access the curriculum. And then the additional part is the differentiation. And each of the lessons, particularly in print, as the examples here, have three levels of differentiation. And so our current lessons are related to US government. And so you can see through examples of differentiation, this is in the single article that we had for this, for one of our lessons. And through this, they were introduced to the subject, they were able to engage in a rigorous dialogue about the subject, and then they applied critical thinking to the activities related to the subject of the Bill of Rights, our rights in the USA. And I just want to point out that another component of our curriculum is that it is a comprehensive reading, sorry, reading program that offers five components, like phonetic awareness, phonetic fluency vocabulary, and comprehension, but we do additionally in our program use evidence-based reading programs as well, based on student reading. And so what are our educational and social outcomes? The Alternative Learning Curriculum Program offers the students the opportunity to gain foundational academic skill at their level alongside peers with same or similar needs. Students are learning science and social studies content, and they're able to have meaningful discussions with each other based on common knowledge, common vocabulary, experiences, and also their similar learning profiles. In our classroom, the student confidence in their learning is high because of their successes and understanding the content and participation in our whole class activities, and it's in an environment that'll, that'll allow them to shine. I'd also like to add that the students accessing this curriculum to increase their educational outcomes are not isolated in separate classrooms within a public school. Based on their IDP team decisions, the students in the ALC programs participate daily in meaningful inclusion alongside the non-disabled peers. Although naturally evolving friendships amongst the peers do occur, all of the students also have access to staff that are skilled with facilitating social relationships. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share our ALC program with you, and I am honored to have been and to be the teacher of some really amazing kids. Thank you.
I just want to thank Amy and Lori for coming and explaining some of our amazing programs that we have in Delmar. As you can hear, we tailor our, our programs to meet our students' needs. Delmar as a district, we are committed to ensuring that all of our students have what they need in order to thrive. Our goal is to ignite genius in every single student and also provide them with the joy of learning in whatever classroom they might be in. It's been our absolute pleasure to come and talk to you about how specially-designed instruction supports all of our students across our district that receive services through ID. And I just want to say, for me, it's an honor and privilege to work with such educators that put students' needs at the forefront each and every day and make sure that students' learning is designed to give them maximum benefit. That's all we have. If you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. And just as I said-
And just what I say, we're so grateful to you and we're so proud of our special education offerings in this district. So it's great that you have this opportunity to share it with us and with the general public, because it's really some amazing things happening in the classroom. And just the philosophy that I know that we all share of just meeting every child where they are and helping them to achieve whatever their highest potential they need is just what we're here for, for every child. So thank you for that. I want to open it up to the board to see if you have any questions about the program.
I'm going to echo Erica's gratitude, and I'm really, really happy that we're getting this presentation. And I hope that we get a lot more of these kinds of presentations going forward. This is something that I want to know more about. And I'm assuming everyone in the room is appreciative of everything you shared with us tonight. And I do have a question regarding, so you've got a lot of different resources that you're using and it sounds like you like them. And I wanted to know, does the unique system offer opportunities for project-based learning in a differentiated way?
I'm actually really happy you just asked that because our next unit that's coming up is related to science and understanding how students have to make a hypothesis and prove it out. And for that unit, each of the students will be doing their own science fair-style project for that, related to different science questions.
I just have a question about social skills development. And I don't know if that's maybe covered in the different sessions, but I know sometimes there are social skills groups or things like that are offered to children, both in generalized and specialized. Is that something that you guys cover or is that something that will be covered elsewhere?
Erica, are you asking specifically in one of these programs? Or are you asking within our special education?
Special education, whether they're in this program or not.
Yeah, that's a good question. So like I said, the last time we talked, if a student has a need that they require level of support or service in, that service would be provided by one of our special educators, whether that was an education specialist, one of our school psychologists, whoever that specialist might be to best meet that student's needs. We have several students that require some level of social skills support. Sometimes those students have cognitive delays. And so that support also might be provided through one of our speech-language psychologists. But just depending on what the goal is, what the need is, then the IEP reflects what that need is and who's going to be providing that service.
Okay. And do the counselors ever get involved? I'm just trying to understand if it all fits together in providing that even within the general education population?
So do the counselors tend to support us in general education, where our school psychologist and/or mental health therapist might be supporting our students in special education that require some level of social skills development?
Sorry, one question. I don't know if you're a reading buddy, like...
That's an example.
Yeah. Because having like buddies, buddy peer, parents, or assistants.
I can just ask for my program. So the students in my program are 4th through 6th grade. So our buddies have already kind of come up with them since kindergarten. So they're kind of more natural buddies at this point by 4th grade. But we do like a reverse mainstreaming. We do lunch clubs together where the students are active within my classroom.
And then I'm just trying to understand how the co-teaching model works in this district. So could you just touch on that a little bit more? I'm familiar with co-teachers that have special credentials. And I'm just wondering if you could expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we continue to support co-teaching via our general education teachers as well as our special education teachers. And then support that might be provided, if I talk about specially-designed instruction, that's instruction that's designed by one of our special educators. So we're also training our IAs to provide that level of support. And Amy spoke to it when she talked about co-teaching. That is an intensive way for us to support within that classroom setting through a push-in type of model, and that we provide a pro-push-in model.
So that is a special education credential teacher pushing into a general classroom?
Not necessarily. It could be an instructional aide working in conjunction with a general education teacher that's been trained in co-teaching. But that direct instruction or direct supervision is coming from a special education teacher. So it could be either or. And then co-teaching doesn't have to be done in special education. Co-teaching can also be two general education teachers supporting in a classroom. So co-teaching is just a mode, a way to support students. And in Delmar, we're using it to maximize inclusion for the students that that's appropriate for.
Thank you.
I have one question. Well, my daughter was in our district. I don't know how many years she's been there. She was in a special day class. How is this different than that, or is it different, what you're teaching on this program?
Want to speak to that?
Yeah, well, I don't know if there's necessarily anything different about any of the programs. I think what we've really tried to do over the last several years is really tailor the learning and try to make sure that the right students are in the right classrooms. And so when we're talking about meaningful or purposeful access, it's within that continuum that we talked about last time. Where is the, what's the environment that's going to maximize that student's ability to learn? Where is it meaningful and where is it purposeful? And then what setting is that in? And as Lori said, there's always access to general education, but it's based on that student's needs and what level of support that student requires and/or what makes most sense for them to be accessing based on their areas of strength. Does that answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for your board. We'll report to the board when the course begins. Okay, eight point one is the Board Report Strategic Planning Process Update.
This report is an update on our strategic planning process. I spoke about it last month as well. So this evening, and as part of this update, I'll share again, I'll revisit these strategic plan overview, talk about our priority action for this year that we identified in our current strategic plan, which is centered around strategic planning, address participation and feedback, which is interplay of what we plan, what we have planned in our process, thinking about who a strategic planning partner or partners could be, and then looking ahead to the rest of this school year and looking into 2022, 2023. So I talked about this at the last meeting. So this year, DMUSD strategic planning will include a collaborative process focused on creating a common understanding of what our district wants to achieve and what we need to do to meet our long-range goals and real-life objectives. This is the priority action. I'm not going to read through it, but we have set aside a specific focus for this year based around the process for going through a very collaborative, robust strategic planning set of sequence of events and conversations to include a lot of stakeholders that we end up with at the end of this process of our long-range multi-year strategic plan. So one of the things I will focus on and give a little bit of input on tonight in this update is around participation and feedback. We want to, we've talked a lot about this, and really what we want to do is understand where we are right now, where are we in the present, so that it can also inform our future. So really, what is it that we want to accomplish in our strategic planning? And in doing so, how do we engage a variety of participants that includes many diverse perspectives? So we've talked about focus groups, surveys, strategic planning teams. And there are other ways to go about making sure that a variety of participants has the option to be with us in the conversation and to be a part of it throughout the decision-making process and actually before decisions are made as we move into the next long-range plan. And how do we make the input and feedback process visible throughout the entire development of the next strategic plan? So if we're thinking about using multiple channels for actually getting participation and feedback and having this be an ongoing process, we also know that it's important to involve perhaps a facilitator, consultant, in guiding us through and helping us along the way throughout that process. It might be leading some of the meetings, helping us think through, helping us push our thinking. And if we think about, so what is the primary role or what are the roles of what a strategic planning partner would be? We want this partnership to facilitate productive conversations and goal setting. So it helps us think through that so that we can, again, include people in the process of doing just that, the conversation, the goal setting. We also would expect that this partner would be able to use metrics, data, have a firm understanding, and to help us determine a baseline where we are now and then measure progress. What are we measuring? And then actually help us to figure out how we're going to measure it throughout the implementation of the strategic planning. So then what would the criteria be for this next step in selecting a partner, a consultant, to actually help facilitate parts of this process or the process overall? When we think about that, that we want to make sure that we have knowledge and educational research and best practices. We want this, whoever's going to partner with us and help facilitate this to have a commitment to what we know. We want it to be an inclusive process. We know it needs to involve our students, our staff, families, community members. We want it to be open so that people can be a part of our next five, however many years it is for our strategic plan. And then we also know that we want this partnership to have an emphasis on reporting progress to our community throughout the development process. So how do we make that visible? How do we communicate what it is? If there's a meeting, how do we report back out? Make it visible to people who were in the meeting or not and have people actually seeing what's happening throughout the development of the strategic planning. So it's going to be an exciting process. We're looking forward to the next couple of months or the next few months as we, as we, together with our community, determine what our next long-term objectives are and our goals for this school district. We talked a lot about what we've accomplished in the last five years. We'll revisit that again as we move through this year because we're actually in the last year of that. And we want to, as we move through this year, and get ready to have in place for the next school year in 2023, we want to make sure that we're selecting facilitators. So that will be one of our very next steps. We're researching that right now and bringing that forward to the board hopefully soon, who will help us actually support our process. We know we want, will continue gathering input and feedback from all of our community partners and of course, our students, and developing a plan that underscores what our beliefs are as a district, who we are, what we believe in, and that focuses on providing the very best experience for our students. It's been brought up over and over here tonight about genius in our children, the wonderful programming that we have, the focus on what our schools look like, and that we're really at the core, always about doing what's right and best for children. I appreciate that our last, that our last five years have been full of courageous, robust thinking and actually making schools even better for kids than they were before. Our teachers are amazing, our support staff is wonderful, and our leadership is really exceptional. So having all of that good thinking around, combined with our parents and our kids, is going to, I know, bring us to completion of a new strategic plan that will bring vote for board approval in the next few months. I'm happy to answer any questions again. This is an update. I will continue to periodically bring updates in the process and bring forward the next steps. I'm excited.
I have a question. So can you describe a little bit more about how you're, about how you're gathering that input and feedback? You say you're continuing to do that. How are you doing that right now?
So that's part of, as we now move into the next phase, when we say continue, that's part of what we need to articulate. So as we bring on, what we anticipate being a facilitator, somebody to help guide us, consultant, they'll help us develop and articulate what that process looks like for even new and different ways to involve and seek input. So as I said, we already do a lot of meeting with people. How do we make it so that people come to the table? How do we think differently about the kinds of surveying we've been doing so that we get a lot of different voices, a lot of input throughout the process? So I think that it will be important that we, that we bring on a facilitator who can help us think through those parts.
And when do you think would be a timeline for doing this, all this feedback?
Well, the feedback's already going on. And what I look forward to, what we look forward to, is even different, new ways. So as we look at, as I was saying earlier in part of this update, determining a baseline is important. So where are we now? And what kinds of metrics will we be measuring over time? And so both of those things are important in thinking about what's important to measure and how are we going to measure it? So is this, is this a different kind of a way to look at measuring progress? We know we're not, I mean, we do a wonderful job educating children. And we're not only about test scores. And we're not only, so what kinds of measurement, metrics will we be using to actually tell us, are we making progress? Because the only reason we're going to have a new strategic plan is because we want to start with a baseline and we want to actually have that steps and goals. So it's all a part of the next few months. And it will be robust and involve a lot of people.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we could just go back a couple of slides. There's a bullet point at the bottom that I left there. Yeah. How do we make the input and feedback process visible? Maybe that's a bullet point we're looking to. There's always like a lot of feedback that the district and so forth. But what's great about this process is that the criteria that we're using, hopefully to select the consultant, is that they can help us with that. Like what's the way that when we have a workshop, that information can be shared out publicly before it's all synthesized and finalized? But as part of a process, we've done processes that way in the past, where some of the planning around the rebuild and the Sky School. You know, we're done in the same methodology of like coming together, getting input, sharing the input, and then building together in an iterative fashion for the final product. So I'm hopeful that that's what the consultant will help us with. And I appreciate you laying out the goals that we have for that consultant so we make sure we're thinking somebody who can help us with that process.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. I look forward to hearing more. And now, of course, we've been leaving you out of the fun for quite a few hours here. Nine point one, Board Report Facility Update. This is all on the initiative.
Good morning, President Halpern, the members of the board. This evening's facility's update will be on, we'll cover our three main projects that are going on right now. Delmar Hills Academy Modernization, Civic Sky School, and Delmar Hills School Rebuild. For the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization, as we've shared, we're continuing with the background work. We are actually getting to the point where our continued design update is getting close to being able to bring back the community. So we'll be in the process right now of identifying dates and being able to go back to the Delmar Hills community so we can share some update related to this project. As we've shared, we've had to focus more on the school building rather than the old grounds. We will continue to work on that project related to some of the other funding sources to look at how we, that's how we feel already. The play structures that you were talking about, Catherine, we'll be looking at. Replacing the play structures through another funding source. And so we'll be doing the rest of that work. We're really focused on that interior and how we're modernizing the school and hopefully getting back in within the next month or so. Identifying dates, we'll be criticizing that with the community so they have a couple of weeks at least to know when it's coming. And then we'll, of course, come back to the board and share more with the board after we've gotten some of that input. Civic Sky School, as we've shared, we had amazing ribbon cutting. It's been very exciting to see the school come to life. I've seen it go from, you know, a patch of grass to a school and really to a building, but then as we've seen the last six weeks go on, it's turned into a school. And you see the evidence of learning throughout, you see students in there. It's been amazing to see it come to life. And truly, when we look at the process we went through and we were in Seymour Ridge, as you are, thinking about what this should look like and having it really come to fruition of what district design 2022 really meant has been amazing. And I have to say, we are very fortunate for the work that's supported the board, the work of our cabinet, our superintendent, and show of theerson and instructional services team to be a part of it. I don't think it's that case in every other district. And I think that's why we have such a structurally focused school as well. So it's really come together amazingly. This school is probably going to follow up our report fairly soon because punch construction. I walked the kitchen this morning. We're doing actually punch lists because we're at the point where we're looking at what are the last details that we need to make sure that they finalize. And so by October, November, we should have that all signed off on and the school completed. So very exciting to see it moving forward. And then our Delmar Hills Rebuild, as I have shared, we had our demo in March. We had that stop due injunction in May. We are very close to completing. We are very close to completing that whole work. As I've shared with the board, it took us a while to come to an agreement that would allow us to complete that. I'm very happy that we're completing it before we did it in the rainy season because that could have been actually an environmental impact to the reserve. And so that should be done by the end of this week. As was alluded to, the Court of Appeal, we had oral arguments on September 13th. And there was a ruling in our favor that was released just earlier this week on Monday. And it does say in part towards the end that the district's environmental document complies with the secret's requirement. So a strong statement that is very much in our favor, something that we have been saying for quite some time. And we put in a lot of work into those environmental documents and working with the community and making sure that we were complying with the law. And we are very happy to see this ruling. Unfortunately, the injunction that stopped construction is due to the second lawsuit that was filed against this project. It was filed against the city of San Diego for the permits to do the construction. That hearing is being held this Friday, just two days from now. And so we are confident and we can work with our bigger council on how we can, again, as Doug mentioned, it isn't published. So some of the legal maneuvers to make sure that this can be seen by all and we can move forward. And when, September 30th, we're very confident with our next steps. And so we'll be moving forward and then hope to be able to update the board very soon with a new start time and next steps with rebuild in Delmar Hills. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, it could be used as instructive reason for the, especially because, and we may get it too complex, but it involves the concept of the two documents amongst the, on the 30th, where the Court of Appeal said, no.
Oh, why not?
Right. So from that perspective, I'm hopeful that the judge at least takes that to mind when she remembers her decision. But the school, the Pacific Sky, is phenomenal. Kudos to everybody. Thank you.
Is the kitchen, when, sorry, are you going to transfer the meal program to our, the district at that point?
So we have a contract through the end of this calendar year and we are actually working right now on the next steps. To transfer to the kitchen will require either a food service management company or a building up a director and a kitchen staff, both of which take some time. So we are right now investigating next steps related to building out our kitchen program and related to, should there be some use of OKC for the spring as a further bridge to get us doping? So we're, we're looking at a few options with that. But we will have an option that could include potential use of that kitchen starting in the beginning of the year.
Is that going to be an issue with cost? Because my understanding was that once we transferred over, I think we could cap lower, maybe our price a little bit. How is that affecting on pricing?
So it could have an issue on cost, but we are also, when we talk about the food service management company, that has some overhead that we're going to pay, basically pay somebody else to manage our kitchens.
Right.
When we look at our kitchens right now and the program that we've had to put together just to manage serving food that somebody else is cooking, we've actually built more of a program to this point than we had anticipated. And so we are revisiting what that should look like to make sure we make the best decision. I will say that part of the funding for the overage is coming from Fund 17, which is what we had used for the initial opening of Pacific Sky School. Knowing that there will be some costs, and one of those costs was related to the kitchen. So we do have fund being able to take care of it.
Thank you.
I'm, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I was able to go see the kitchen. And I would recommend that everybody work with Chris to go see it. But one thing that was brought up when I was moving the kitchen from some of the principals that joined us there was that the kids really like the food now. And, and so I'm just worried that there's going to be a tail off. And, and so my recommendation would be to maybe get some of those recipes from the people. Just to kind of press that down and maybe keep the continuity going.
We're going to have an amazing kitchen here, I thought.
It's the recipes.
I got it.
A little looky-ho.
You touched on it, but I wanted to know if we have any specific timeframes when we're modernizing the play structures at Delmar Hills?
So we haven't finalized Delmar Hills, but between the other, all, all the schools that we have remaining that have not had their playgrounds remodeled, we're looking at doing that over the next two summers. So we're working on the timeline for that and pricing and we'll probably bring, can we, how many can we get done this next summer with the other projects that we're going to have planned? And then looking at the two summers to be able to build it up throughout all of the districts. So every school will have had an update.
When you present to Delmar Hills, community members and families, will you include those playground plans? Do you have that yet or not?
We don't have a playground plans yet. So we're in the process of creating that. And I don't know that we'll have them in time for that meeting, but I'd, you know, I'd be happy to speak to it at that meeting.
I demand this opportunity to say thank you to you for shepherding this project, the Pacific Sky project, through a very long process. So we really appreciate it. And of course, all the district staff and the consultants who have worked really hard throughout this process to put it together, all starting with our teachers and our community and our kids who gave us the, the design and the content for making this all happen. But really, Chris, we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you.
I just want to say, like, this is, you know, the community trusted us, or trusted the district with a significant amount of money. And I think that this is, it's a momentary example of like what can be done. I mean, I think you guys have done a wonderful job. You knocked it out of heart. And so, I mean, I think that they were entrusted and I think they should continue to trust the work that you were doing. It's incredible work that's done.
Thank you. Okay. So thanks, Chris. We are at 12.1, Board Review Reminder of Upcoming DMSD Events. I find online in our agenda. 2.2 is Board Review Reminder of Upcoming DMSD PTA Events. 2.3 is Board Review Preliminary as the October 2022 regular board meeting. And turn now.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I do. Yeah, just to piggyback on what Doug said, I would love to report in October regarding meal choice preferences, if we have any data on that. And yeah, just kind of any information you can give us at this point regarding when the kitchen will open and what that's going to look like for us financially, if we're going to use a private finder to come in. Or I think there's another opportunity in this country. Yeah. And then I would like us to also be updated on the kindergarten 23, 24 school year and ongoing implementation. What your plan is, is it going to be a full day from day one? Or do you plan on continuing to have minimum days for the first six weeks? And then I would like that to be an action item for October for the board to decide based on information we're given in that report.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, we're going to adjourn into closed session to finish the last two items from our closed session agenda. And thank you, everybody, for coming. We'll reconvene at the session now for closed session. Okay, we are reconvening open session at 8:35 PM. And we've been in closed session and no action was taken. So we are at 12.4, adjourned in the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Your second?
I'll say it.
On favor, I, I, the meeting is adjourned. Have a meeting.
Thank you.